Let me start off by reading our script for this evening. Welcome to April 20th Planning Board Meeting for the Newbury as a preliminary matter. My name is Pete Pecos. I'm the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit you confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody?
Here.
Thank you, Woody. Mary Stone?
Yes.
Thank you. And just for the record, Larry Murphy won't be with us this evening. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Emily Noble?
Here.
Hello, Emily.
Hello.
This might be one of your last meetings with us for a while.
Maybe.
All right. Glad you're here. Anticipated speakers, please respond in the affirmative. Tom Z?
Here.
Thank you, Tom. Steve Sawyer?
Not here yet.
Okay, Mark DiPiero?
I'm here.
Thank you, Mark. Matthew Gaines?
Yeah, I don't know actually if that is expected.
All right, Tom Woodruff?
And they will probably join around 7:30, I think.
And that would also be Paul Avery as well?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Good evening. This is April 20th. Open meeting of the Plan. Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consists with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020 Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law until July 15, 2022. This order suspends the requirements of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering in the meeting ID 832-7141-3056, or by calling 929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable Channel 9 on Zoom and at www.tncctv.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after being called. Before we turn to the first item of the agenda, permit me to continue some to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as a Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button. On your phone, that would be the star six to toggle to mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured for the record by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me. Taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With your guides to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment or ask questions in the following manner. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function for video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully incorrectly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your key phone pad. I will then allow questions or comments for members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called, provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your handle will be lowered when you have been given the floor for the questions. I will then continue down the list of the rate and function column and again afford you the participant applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submission of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Each vote tonight taken will be, of course, by roll call. Okay, let me now pop over to our agenda. And we do have two, we have a public hearing that's going to be starting at 7:15. So we do have a financial report which I will read, so let me pull that up. And this will be the financial report for March 2022. We are required to disclose this information. So the payroll and invoices that have been authorized, number one, payroll warrants for Planning Director and Planning Board Administrator for PR 22-9 for pay period ending 12/22, and for PR 22-20 for pay period ending 3/26/22. Planning Board expense invoices include Verizon Wireless or Planning Board iPad 3/1/2022, Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for 3/22/22, and North Boston Media Group legal ad for zoning amendment for public hearing of 3/8/22, and from our escrow account for Consultant Joseph Walker for the Governors Academy Presby modification peer review of 3/16/2022. All right, Martha, do you want to do our planners' directed report and I'll watch the door?
Um, let's see. We did receive an email from Byfield resident Patty Grimes, which I forwarded to all of you, actually two emails, expressing some concern about the construction that's taking place on, off of Boston Road in Newbury Self-Storage. I had invited her to attend tonight's meeting if she wanted to speak to her concerns. I don't see that she's arrived yet, so. Yeah, I think, I think these are, you know, the uses that are allowed in the town. Both of these are allowed uses, and so this kind of goes to work that we'll be doing on our zoning update and reviewing the table of use regulations. So certainly something that should be discussed further down the road.
Martha, I'd like to keep this open in case she does, Patty does come on board, then I'd like to have more of a discussion. I'd like to have her, you know, to articulate her feelings, just so that we can hear what she has to say and the board can respond. So I'd like to get that open if we could.
Yep, absolutely. And then just a couple of quick notes on 217 to 221 High Road. Adam True is going to be coming before the board, probably at the next meeting, to request a slight extension of the limit of work behind one of the farthest lots. It's not, it's to do some clearing, not a tremendous amount of tree removal, but clearing the underbrush and taking, taking down some existing trees which are not in great shape. Sam and Joseph Watkins and I took a walk out there last week just to review it, along with their engineer Scott Cameron. And so Scott's putting together a plan to depict what they want to do. There are also some grading changes to level, level things out right at the edge. I know that the butter, Mary Ann Sheen, has also been in communication with Adam regarding the tree screening. So we'll be following up on that as well. 108 Main Street, Mr. Colin Tony did start work, then he removed the equipment to take it to another site, came back for another day, I believe, and has gone again. So we're waiting for a schedule from him for, you know, when they'll be starting to work up in earnest. And I have a draft plan to review for an A and R Orchard Street, just a lot line change fairly straightforward. So that will probably be on the agenda for the next, the next meeting. It should be ready for that. And that's about all I have.
Okay, we have one minute. So what I might just start is, I just might start some committee reports. I'll do Concom real quick. Concom had a constitution, had a public workshop last night. We're working with some bylaw discussions and it's a very good opportunity. We were just trying to see where we, where the interest is in looking at the wetlands and what we might want to consider with regards to bylaw change. So that took place last night. Leslie, do you have something from Select Board?
Yeah, real quick on the Select Board. There was a the Commonwealth of Mass granted Newbury Fire Department $2,305.40 for a automated external defibrillator equipment, and public hearing for a dog nuisance dangerous was continued, and different forms of transportation and what police department and DPW equipment have gone to surplus to bring those things up to date. And the Larkin Road people came and spoke again about the culvert and the bridge. And Mr. Colin Tony had a change of language in the on the, on the Larkin Road agreement, both our town council and his council both missed it. It was supposed to have said that they could install the underground utilities, because they have to go in before the culvert does, but they will not be able to turn them on until the project is done only for testing reasons. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. So it's one minute past 7:15. So we have a public hearing that was to take place this evening, and that was in continuance for the special permit application for ground mounted solar pole and torque photovoltaic installation, excuse me, 75 Boston Road, Newbury landfill map R36 lot 27, applicant Alliance, Newbury LLC owner, Tom Newbury, because this is a special permit application requiring a super majority, four to five members for approval. There's only four Planning Board members present tonight. Eric McLean, on behalf of Alliance, Newbury LLC, has requested that the board continue this public hearing to a meeting scheduled for May 18, 2022. That being the case, I would accept a motion to accomplish that.
So moved.
Thank you, Woody, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie, for the second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion, George?
None.
Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Thank you. Woody, discussion?
None.
Thank you, Mary, discussion?
No.
Thank you. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful. Chairs in favor as well. And that will, that will be continued, just for clarification, May 18, 2022, 7:15 via Zoom. All right, continuing on our agenda, we have old business 15 Coleman Road, OSRD Fieldstone Lane, request for release of lots one and eight for Performance Covenant. Martha, do you want to bring us the board up to speed?
Sure. So as you all may recall, the developer, Tom Z, requested release of these lots back in November. I think it was November 10, 2021. And at that time, the roadway was constructed to binder, underground utilities were installed, but the shared septic system, which serves all of the, all of the properties, all of the lots, was actually being redesigned at that time. So the board decided to defer the vote on releasing these lots until the septic system was installed and certificate of compliance was issued by the Health Director. It took, it took some time for that to happen due to some site conditions and, and also supply chain issues. But the installation is completed. And the Health Director issued a certificate of compliance yesterday. So I was in touch with Tom and his attorney today and was provided with a copy of the recorded Performance Covenant as well as the Form E, which the board will need to, to sign to release the lots one and eight. And those were forwarded to the board. So that's where we are right now.
Beautiful. Thanks very much, Martha, for the update. Tom, do you have anything that you'd like to say to the board?
Excuse me. I guess just that I hope I don't have to use the phrase or equivalent for products into the future as we had to do in the last four months. It's been, it's been, it's been a little bit of a, little bit of a struggle to get product, to get, to get things done, but but, you know, the place looks, looks really good. We're glad to have the system online and you know, looking forward to moving ahead.
Okay, great. Before we get to business, tell me what's going on with the father stone, Tom?
Okay, I'm still waiting for the surveyor to refine the A and R plan per month as a couple of revisions. It had actually, you know, not throwing rocks or anything, but it's been very difficult for a lot of the, you know, the background professionals to, to get some, some of the paperwork office work, you know, pumped out in recent months. And the surveyor is, you know, he's going to get it done, but, but I don't have the finished product of the, of the A and R plan. On the other hand, we do have the MOU and everything else in place. So we just, in this past week, started constructing the stone wall on the backside of the, of the parcel that's being transferred to the town.
Hold on, Tom. I have a visual. Martha, can you pop up the images? So as Tom's talking, he can explain what's going on with the images, just so the board can see that and in the community too, because I think it's important.
Okay.
So are you all able to see that?
Why not yet?
No.
There we go. Perfect. Okay, Tom.
You can, you can actually see the stone, the three-quarter inch piece stone base in the background there towards the, towards the evergreen. The, we've mined some of the stones that are from the site that, that from some of the old stone walls that were, that were on site in the areas that were disturbed, not out in the back. And our stonemason, Ray Martino, who is really an artist, is constructing a plus or minus 30 inch by 30 inch dry set wall, which he's planning to mortar the, the top course in place, because we all probably expect to know that, that people may be sitting on this wall and that'll give it a little bit more stability and security. Unfortunately, Ray has shingles right now, so he, he is on a limited work schedule. So we're hoping that this gets done in the next week or 10 days, but, but it's in process. The stock is there and it, I'm sure it's going to look beautiful when he's done with it.
Beautiful. So Martha, could you just go back to one picture or two? Beautiful. So the stone, that's the piece stone that you were describing by that time?
That's, that's correct. Yeah. And that, that, that stone base is, you know, is, you know, the typical stone base that we put under all of our, you know, stone walls, whether they're structural or not. It, it's set just inside the, the, the parcel limits of, of the, of the parcel being granted to town. And the reason why I said it just inside is because if there's any work to be done on it, the town, you know, there's, you know, still has the, the opportunity to go on the perimeter of it if there's anything to be done or anything that wants to be done and still not have to ask anybody's permission to do that.
And then that wall will continue around the other two, the other two sides, or will there be?
Yeah, it'll, and it'll, it'll run right down to the, my intent is that it will run right down to the, to the curving down in the, or just maybe a few feet, probably a few feet, we'll stop at a few feet beyond behind the curving, so it doesn't get damaged with flour, snow or anything. But it'll encompass, you know, the entire, essentially the entire parcel.
Great.
And that, that, and in that way, either the, the, any, any vehicles or equipment or anything, anytime in the future, we'll have plenty of, of access and passage to get in, you know, and safely get in from the, the Fieldstone Lane frontage portion of this lot.
Yeah. I, I forget, will there be a gate there to, to limit or will it just be the, the wall itself?
I, I never, I've never thought about a gate or anything, Peter. I mean, we certainly could do that. I mean, I, I I, I guess that's, that's a topic for, for another discussion maybe, but I thought it should be open. I mean, I think it's easier access. I think if you have a gate, you may have people either climbing over it or be a maintenance, you know, item down the road. I mean, that's, the, the stone is, is maintenance free and they'll provide, provide access, but with the curving there, it won't, it won't provide an easy, you know, access for somebody trying to do any, any damage or anything.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. And it's a treasure of the town. We're glad we're able to protect it and maintain it.
Yeah, well, we'll do, we'll do anything that, you know, that's appropriate or that we're reasonably requested to do to do that to, Peter.
Let me touch base. Martha, do we have any other concerns?
Not that I'm aware of. Tom, is everything is squared away with Essex County Green Belt?
Yeah, yes, it is there. In fact, we've just recently drafted the releases from my, my financial institutions to, in order to, to grant that, that open space parcel to them. So those we have in hand. And we're really just waiting for the, for this release to be finalized so that we can then record our, our our administrative documents, meaning the HOA and covenant that relate to the private road. And then, and then we'll transfer it to Essex County Green Belts. And, you know, pretty immediately thereafter, hopefully transfer out the house and barn to the, the buyer that's been waiting patiently and anxiously to get to work at making that place a little bit nicer than it is.
Great. All right. Let me see if there are any board members that have any questions at this point in time. Martha, we could probably start screen sharing. Thanks so much. George, any questions, sir?
I do not have any questions.
Thank you. Leslie, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Woody, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Great. Great. Mary, any questions?
I'm just wondering how it's coordinated on the entities that contract.
Say that again, Mary.
I, I'm curious as to how Greenbelt and the contractor and the town all coordinate the information and stay on the same page. Who, who's in charge of that ultimately?
Martha, do you want to handle that one?
I might, might put this one in Philly.
Do the best we can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that there's really that, that much interface between Greenbelt and, and the contractor. That's more, more an issue of deed and stuff, but Tom, I'll put that back to you.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, ultimately, you know, the, the, the maintenance and facilities of the road and access to the open space have to be maintained by, by the residents who live there. And beyond, beyond that, Mary, I think it's, it's you know, I think Martha's right. There's, there's not a lot of, a lot of interface. I mean, Greenbelt will take care of the open space. The Homeowners Association is compelled to take care of the roadway, not just for access to open space, obviously, but for access and safety to, to their own homes. And those, those are items that are, that are, that are covered with the, the Homeowners Association document and, and the protective covenant that, that this board already approved the, the form of some number of months ago.
So there's no overlapping at all of responsibility, Tom?
I, I don't think so. I think it's, I think it's in my mind, it's relatively clear, I think, you know.
I guess you're so, okay.
At this point in time, I entertain a motion to release lots one and eight, as shown in the definitive subdivision plan entitled Site Plan Set for Fieldstone Lane and Open Space Residential Development Definitive Plan of 15 Coleman Road, Newbury, Mass. 019 dated January 8, 2021, and revised August 4, 2021, prepared by Civil Design Group LLC, recorded at Southern Essex Registry of Deeds Book 40170, page 165. I entertain a motion. I'm sorry, George, thank you. And who seconded that?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. On the motion, any discussion, George?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion, Woody?
None.
Thank you. Any discussion, Leslie?
No.
Any discussion, Mary?
No.
Beautiful. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Woody, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful. And chairs in favor as well. Beautiful. Okay, Tom, continue onward.
Wait.
Oh.
I'm sorry. There's a second vote to authorize the sign the Form E.
Thank you very much. Yes. So I would need a motion to allow the chair to sign this, this release.
Allow the chair to sign the release.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. And George, would you like to second that?
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion, George?
None.
Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, Woody?
None.
Mary, discussion?
No.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, Martha, I think now we're good.
Yes, so you will need to come in and sign it and have it notarized. And once that's done, then I'll get that to Tom.
Beautiful.
And thank you, Peter, Martha, everybody on the board. I appreciate your patience with the, working our way through the, through the process with you. So thank you all very much.
Appreciate it as well. Thanks very much, Tom. Next, on the agenda, I have 105 High Road. Let me get this down here. A request for approval of proposed grading utility layout changes and other associated changes in building footprints in the exclusive use areas. EUAs 1, 2, 3, and 4. So summarize, at our last meeting, the applicant presented revised grading plans for EUAs 1 through 4, based on the review comments from Joseph Walker, the board's peer review engineer. In the board's own review of the plans, the board voted to approve the proposed changes as minor modifications and to direct Martha Taylor to draft a decision with a record of the vote and conditions. Martha, could you pop up the review decision?
Yes. So are you able to see that?
Can you make it a little larger?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
Whoops, sorry. Did not mean to do that.
Okay, we just need to enhance the screen just a touch.
So how is that?
That is great. Very good.
So would you like me to go through it?
Perhaps just the highlights.
Yep. So this decision is, is very similar to the one that was done for exclusively series five through nine. You know, with, with changes made to reference these, these particular plans and the dates. The, so we've got the dates of when it was discussed. Procedural history is a little bit different in that this, these changes were, were submitted to the board on the first round that was discussed at the March 16 meeting. There were some changes, including addition of some, some retaining walls, which the board were substantial modifications. So the applicant request or the applicant's engineer requested an opportunity to be able to further revise the drawings. They were revised, went through peer review, and Joseph Watkins, his review determined that they were very, very similar to the approved plan. The, the approved OSRD site plan dated August 27, 21. August twenty seventh, twenty one. Um, next is submitted materials and information, so that's just been updated to, uh, reflect this process, uh, findings and determination, the first two findings are the same, and then, the third one, you know, basically, um, says what I just said, that Joe found them to be, uh, essentially the same, to match the approved soil grading. And the, um, is there a question, comment? Keep going.
I think keep going, yes.
Okay, um, and then the decision, the conditions are, uh, essentially the same as for the, um, five through nine. However, I did add the, um, language regarding infiltration drip trenches at the house perimeters for all of the exclusive use areas, one through nine, since those were shown not only on one through four, but also five through nine. And Joe had also made a comment that the site contractor shall follow the plans exactly with respect to the layout of the infiltration drip, drip trenches, seem, since they seem to be very, um, specific to each of the, uh, house footprints, um, and assuming that that they're related to the, uh, the roof shapes for those. And, uh, the other conditions are the same as the conditions on the previous decision for through five through nine.
Uh, thank you, Martha, uh, let me ask board members if they have any questions or comments, and Leslie, I, I muted you because the dog was barking, so you'll need to unmute yourself. Uh, George, do you have any questions or, uh, uh, question, uh, any comments?
Uh, no, the comments, I think everything is in good place right now.
Beautiful, thank you, George, uh, Woody, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
No, no comments at all.
Uh, Leslie, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leslie, uh, Mary, do you have any questions or comments?
Don't, I don't.
Okay, wonderful, um, that being the case, um, I would ask for, uh, a motion, uh, to vote to approve the decision as amended, uh, approving the proposed gradient changes for, uh, EUAs, uh, one, two, three, uh, and four, shown on the OSRD grading drainage plans sheet, C one, uh, dot twenty one, uh, C one dot twenty two, uh, last revised, uh, three twenty nine, uh, twenty two, as minor modifications, so I'd accept that motion.
So moved.
Thank you for the motion, uh, Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George, uh, on the motion, uh, any discussion, George?
No.
Thank you, any discussion, uh, Leslie?
No.
Thank you, uh, Woody, any discussion?
None.
Thank you, Mary, any discussion?
No.
Thank you, uh, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful, chairs in favor as well. Beautiful, um, I, I think that'll take care of it, Mark, do you have any questions, uh, for the board?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
So Martha, currently, uh, you've been back and forth with Matt Gaines today, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, we have a tripartite agreement that's in place right now, it's all agreed upon, but it needs to be recorded. So, can you take me through that issue again right now, because I'm trying to pull, building permits, and I guess if the answer is that we have to wait, I'm asking the board, if they would consider letting me have foundation only, at my own risk, I gotta put five foundations in, that'll take a month. And, to, once the tripartite agreement is, um, recorded, so maybe you could take me through that, Martha, a little more, what still has to happen? Seems like we got a little bit of a logjam there with that.
Sure, um, I wouldn't call it a logjam, but, um, at the, at the last meeting, the board voted to approve the tripartite agreement, subject to final, uh, finalization and review by town council. Um, I received, um, last week, a copy of the tripartite agreement, that was actually signed by, by Mark and by the bank, but in reviewing it with town council, there were actually, there were some blanks that, she had requested be filled in before it came to us. And the agreement was actually based on the original, um, tripartite amount, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it was about eight hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um, instead of.
Yeah.
Yep, um, instead of the reduced amount, um, that was, had been reviewed by Joseph Watkins and discussed, um, reflecting the value of the work complete. So, um, and there were a couple of other discrepancies, so the exhibit actually had the amended bond amount, but the language of the tripartite agreement had the original amount. And whoops, in the dark here. Um, so I communicated all of that to Matt, he got back to me late in the day with responses, um, and I think all of the, uh, items have been picked up, um, and he was gonna check with the bank to make sure that, um, the, the signature that they had done stood, or if it needed to be, if we needed to get a, a new signature, so that was the last I heard from him.
Okay, so in the event that the bank's okay, is it ready for Peter's signature, or what, you know?
But the bank is, um, Lisa and I need to take one final review, but assuming that Matt has in fact picked up everything that was, uh, brought to his attention, and the bank is okay, with it, then it would be a matter of having Pete sign and have it notarized, as authorized by the board, and then get that recorded, um, at the Southern Essex. The other piece of this is that the performance covenant is still in effect and will remain in effect until the tripartite is, recorded, executed and recorded, and the board will need to have a request, to release that covenant, but that can't be released until the tripartite is, is recorded.
I thought that just superseded it.
No, it's actually, it, it, it has to actively be, be released, so there's a process for that, we've been through that on other projects.
But it doesn't have to be, but that still wouldn't hold up the building permits, what, once the tripartite is, is recorded after Peter's signature, is it in full force at that point, then, then I can come back and say, we can then release the covenant, right?
Um, I would like to say yes, I'd wanna double check with council on that, um, I, I would think that if it's, if it's been recorded, it's in effect. But I, I really would like to confer with her to see if there's, there's anything that I'm missing.
But the tripod ultimately, though, uh, supersedes that, it's just a matter of, uh,
Yeah, but it, it does need to be released, and it can't be released until after the tripartite is, is.
Right, right, so then at that time, we can just ask for a release of the covenant, after the tripartite's in place.
Right, so if that's in place, then we could request that release at the next meeting.
Right, I didn't realize at the last meeting that they, they, that we assumed the new number of six ninety three, whatever it was, dropping it from eight, I didn't know that, uh, we assumed that number, I thought we were still starting from eight seventy five, so, so tripartite is at six ninety three, the new number.
It's at the new number, that's correct, I think that's why attorney winner had, had requested that, and so Steve prepared that revised estimate, and that is what's, what's attached, that was, that's what was attached to the tripartite that, that was sent to me, but it didn't agree with the language, which hadn't been changed yet.
Okay, well, Matt will be on it in the morning for sure, so you believe at this point it's just between you and Lisa, and Matt, on some other, small issues or whatever.
But he, um, he made a, uh, the tripartite made reference to an Exhibit D, there is no Exhibit D, so Matt corrected that. Um, he corrected the language to agree with the revised, um, bond estimate. Um, so as far, as far as I know, I haven't looked at it, but as far as I know, everything has been addressed.
Okay, so once Peter does sign it, and we record, I'm set to pull building permits?
Again, I'd like to check with council on that, I think that if it's in effect, that would be reasonable, but.
Yeah, that, that I'd need to know, because we're ready to, uh, you know, we're ready to dig seven. So, at least five, so I was asking earlier, is it appropriate for me to ask that if we could dig, at my own risk, dig five houses, with, you know, when the permit is put together, it's called foundation only, can't go any further than that, is that a possibility? In case this drags on, I'm in a good time of year now, and we're pent up to really wrap this project up this year. So, is that reasonable?
Mark, I think you're right, you're right here, I mean, you're, the tripartites is, it's I's, I's, T's crossed, recorded, that's, that's happened now.
I've been here for a long time, though, it's been, I always think I'm right there, and I'm close, and it's a week or two, a week, you know, I'm in very valuable, um, conditions now with weather, so we're really ready to go. So I guess the answer is no on that, I got it, okay. That's cool, so I guess our next move is to see what Lisa need has to say, and get this squared away in that way, I guess.
I, I think you're very close, Mark, I mean, the attorneys are just, again, dotting the I's, crossing the T's, and then, then it's, it's a signature and recorded.
But we don't have to come back to another meeting, Martha, we, if, if, if the, if the attorneys agree, you agree, it goes to Peter, we can then go on record.
Right, the tripartite does not need to come back, so then you'll need to come back with a request to release the performance covenant.
And that's almost, that's almost an automatic feature. You know, that's, uh, tripartite does supersede everything.
But it's, it's still a process, but there's no need for you to come back regarding the tripartite, because the board did authorize the chair to sign it last time.
Hopefully, if they get this done in the next couple of days, then I could get released, okay. I believe that's the only thing between me then and the building permits, so. All right, I'll strike that request about getting foundations only, and, uh, we'll, we'll consider it'll happen.
Very good, thank you, Mark.
Okay, all right, have a good evening. Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, continuing on our agenda, uh, we have, uh, new business, uh, Governors Academy, uh, French Student Center renovations, for approval of as-built, uh, and for a certificate of compliance with conditions of the, uh, site plan review decision. Uh, and this was a site plan review, uh, that was granted, let's see, site plan review for the French Student Center renovation, uh, were granted back in November of twenty nineteen. Uh, the construction is complete, uh, and Governors has requested, uh, the approval of the as-built, uh, and approval of the project, uh, being in compliance with conditions of the, uh, SPR decision. Um, the, uh, as-built were submitted to Joseph Walker, uh, for review, uh, he had one minor comment, which has been addressed by the applicant's engineer, uh, and a PFD of the revised plan has been submitted, uh, Martha and I did a, uh, site visit today, and everything appears to be in order and in compliance, with the SPR, um, let me see if there's any questions from board members, George, you have any questions, sir?
I do know.
Okay, and this regarding the as-built, or the project in general, um, Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Uh, Leslie, do you have any questions? Oh, Leslie, you're muted?
No questions.
Thank you, uh, Mary, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, wonderful, um, Tom, or Paul, do you have any information or, uh, anything you want to share with the, with the board?
Nope, nothing further.
Okay, great, um, if that is the case, uh, then I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the as-built, uh, site plans for Governors Academy French Student Center renovations, uh, sheets, uh, AB, uh, two hundred and eighty, three hundred, uh, dated March thirty first, uh, twenty twenty two, prepared by Oak Consulting Group, uh, and deemed the work in compliance with requirements and conditions of the site plan approval decision.
So moved.
Thank you, George, for the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Leslie, for the, um, uh, second, uh, discussion of the motion, discussion, George?
No.
Uh, thank you, uh, Leslie, discussion?
No.
Uh, thank you, Leslie, uh, Woody, discussion?
No discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mary, discussion?
No.
Uh, thank you, uh, George, how do you vote? George?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie, uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody, uh, Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Great, and the chairs, uh, in favor as well, um, hey, Tom and Paul, uh, you know, Martha and I walked through that, uh, that building today, and I just said to her, wow, do these guys know how truly fortunate they are to go to school here, that place is beautiful. And Martha commented on those lockers and said, my son would have drooled for those when he went to school there.
Yeah, absolutely, it's a great space, the kids love it.
Yeah, that's great, you guys, uh, guys do wonderful work over there, and we're, we're glad, uh, that we have this, uh, great working relationship.
Thank you very much for being supportive, and, um, yeah, thanks.
Just a couple of follow-up notes, we don't, the planning board, unlike the conservation commission, doesn't really issue a certificate of compliance, but I will, you know, send you a certificate of the board's vote approving the as-built, and saying that it's substantially, you know, in compliance with the site plan review decision conditions. Um, the final step will be release of the performance guarantee, um, I'll hold off on asking the board to vote on that, um, we'll need to get a request from you, but, um, that should hold off until we get any final billing from, from Joe for his review of the as-built and stuff, so, you know, that might be a month or two, we'll see. But, I, you know, I think other than that, that, uh, that does, we'll close that out.
Um, how many copies, are copies do you want, Martha, the estate?
Um, I would say, um, two, two hard copies.
Okay, I think I, I can drop those by tomorrow.
Perfect, that would be great, thank you.
Hey, then I think we're all set, thanks very much, guys.
My, thank you.
All right. You all very much.
Okay. Um, let's see, continuing on our agenda, uh, we had select board, we had, uh, we don't have ZBA, uh, Martha, MBPC.
Um, actually, the, uh, commissioners meeting is tomorrow, and the planners meeting is next week, so there's not really anything significant there. And as far as the ZBA is concerned, um, their meeting is tomorrow night, and there, there's a, two new hearings on it, one is for, um, ten, tenth street, uh, the other is actually an amendment, essentially an amendment for, uh, what is it, five to Holy Way, I think it was approved previously, but, uh, unfortunately, the project as designed did not take into account that, that it needed to comply with the base flood elevation, it's in the AE zone, so the applicant has come back for a revision on that.
Yeah.
And then the ZBA will be voting on a, a decision for a project that, um, I think was before the board last month, or two months ago in February.
Good, good, good. Um, so that wraps up our liaison, uh, reports, uh, so I think all that we have left, uh, is, uh, uh, minutes, uh, from March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, Emily, it was nineteen pages, do I remember correctly?
Eighteen.
Well, uh, uh, thank you very much, Em, and, um, if, has everyone had an opportunity to review the, uh, minutes?
Yes.
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 Um, and, and any changes to be noted?
No.
Okay, uh, then I would accept a, uh, motion to accept the minutes, uh, for, uh, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
Motion to accept.
Uh, motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Leslie, thank you, Woody, uh, discussion of the motion, uh, George?
No.
Thank you, sir, discussion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you, uh, Woody, discussion?
None.
Um, Mary, discussion?
No.
Okay, uh, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, wonderful, uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful, um, great, that wraps that, oh, say again?
And the chair.
Well, the chair is in favor, yes, thank you very much, yes, and Emily, thank you very, very much, um, is there anything on our agenda, uh, that I'm missing here? Um, March second, we only, uh, we're only partially drafted, is that correct, Martha?
That's correct.
Yeah, you know, and it's okay to run out of steam every now and again. Okay, um, that being the case, I believe I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, Martha, you could talk about, uh, the letter, for the emails running, uh, Boston Road and the Slid Road issue.
Um, I think we had, um, you know, I mentioned it during the, the planning director's report, and we were gonna see if, uh, Ms. Grimes, came to the meeting, which she was invited to do, and, and, uh, I don't see her here.
So, let me just circle back in there, George, just for the, I, I will try to comment on some things, some, uh, issues that were raised. Um, this process, uh, uh, went through both planning and, and concom, and went through kind of an extensive, uh, planning, extensive concom, there were changes made to the plans based on, uh, uh, both those, uh, public hearings. Um, and, uh, the, the project, Martha, correct me if I speak incorrect. And the the project, Martha, correct me if I speak incorrectly, is zoned appropriately. And that is one of the struggles that we as planner, as a planning board had to with with a sensitive area that it was to a resource and conservation also had that. But the applicant indicated what they were going to do. They're doing what they're doing and the site is a construction site right now. The final product will probably look different than what we're seeing now. The applicant is responsible for doing tree mitigation. And I know Martha's has was going to be initiating a conversation with the applicant to make sure that that's in place. And I think the the big component of this project, there were two projects back to back. And one site had to be accessed at the benefit of another project. And that created, I think, a significant amount of trees coming down. And we've expressed our, we on our sidewalks have expressed our concerns with wildlife corridors and light issues and other aspects during this process. And we've tried to work through those as best we can. And we welcome anyone to to come for the board to to express their concerns and we we want to be sensitive and hear people's concerns and also explain the role of this board in this process.
Well, Peter, I would also like to ask Martha about any more information about the railroad issue, transportation issue and building more facilities for housing. Has there been any more on that?
The MBTA communities legislation, I haven't heard anything concrete. I did have a couple of conversations with Gerard Witten, Executive Director of MBPC, and he's indicated that from what he's heard, all the community's comments are being taken into account by DHCD and and others. But I don't know at this point how much the guidance might be changed or when it might be, when the final version might be coming out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anything else we need to button up on the tail end of a planners' report, Martha? Are we good?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, good. Wonderful. That being the case, I think that completes our agenda for this evening. I would entertain a motion then.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, George, for the motions. There's a second to the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Is there discussion on the motion? Discussion, George?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No discussion.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
All right, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And good night to everyone?
Good night. So much.
Yes, thanks, everyone. Glad we had this meeting. Have a good night. Thank you, Martha. Thank you, Emily.